Calling a meeting to order.
Roll call for the City Council Meeting of June 21st, 2023. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon. Please stand for silence, meditation, and the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all grateful and thankful that you allowed us to gather in these chambers today. We ask that you by the power of your Spirit help us make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the City of Erie and its residents. We ask you to look after those who are least fortunate and those who are in mourning. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the June 9th City Council Meeting and bills for payment on June 23rd and June 30th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.
All right, we're opening our council meeting today with a presentation from Northwest Legal Services, providing some information about statistics, housing services, and general issues facing some of our low-income neighbors.
Thanks. Yeah, I'm a little low-tech today, but I did bring magnets. Everybody likes fridge magnets, I think. So my name's John Ganderud. I'm an attorney at Northwestern Legal Services and the manager of our intake unit. I'm just kind of curious, how many people have ever heard of our organization here? Okay, most of you. So we are the civil legal aid provider for the 10 counties of Northwestern Pennsylvania, which obviously includes Erie County. So we're roughly analogous to the public defender would be on the criminal side. We are a nonprofit law firm, so we don't take money from our clients. We are funded by a combination of federal Pennsylvania grants and local grants for the services we provide. The information that I've handed out, the first sheet is just an overall information about our organization and what we do. So again, we cover the 10 counties of Northwestern Pennsylvania. We do a variety of civil legal types of cases, as you can see in the circle chart, which gives basically the percentages of the different types of legal matters that we do handle. I will say we don't handle legal matters for which a low-income person can get an attorney even though they don't have money, such as personal injury cases and things of that nature, or cases where they can get provided an attorney otherwise by the state or a local government. So we've pretty much sort of filled the gap, if you will, to some extent, but our funding is limited, so we do have restrictions as far as what we can take or the level of service that we can provide. Our two biggest areas, as you can see, are family law and housing issues. And the second sheet that breaks down basically some statistics on housing cases in the City of Erie, which you might actually have an interest in specifically. Basically, as you can see, our program, about 35% of all of our cases in our 10 counties, we cover our housing-related cases. However, that percentage is much higher in Erie, in the City of Erie, where around 55% of all of the cases that we have involve housing issues. So it is a big issue in the City of Erie, which you all probably know already. And so this kind of confirms that as far as the type of work that we do for residents in the City of Erie. I've broken down the types of housing cases that we do in the city by case type in the bottom, those are the bar graphs in the bottom on the second page. So by far the largest number in 2022, which is the statistics I pulled up for you, are evictions and habitability, which would be housing conditions, would be the second biggest and so on. Now, there is an asterisk under evictions in which I indicate many evictions are related to housing quality issues, what we call habitability issues in the city. We don't keep specific statistics, break out eviction cases that have habitability-related issues, but I'm one of the primary attorneys that talks and provides legal assistance to people in housing cases. So I can tell you anecdotally that a large percentage, probably over half of all eviction cases of clients I talk to involve housing quality or habitability issues. It's not that infrequent for tenants to become frustrated enough with landlords not fixing conditions on the property, they take to desperate measures, including withholding rent on their own, which unfortunately then leads to an eviction for non-payment of rent. So that's why we get a lot of evictions that are related to housing quality issues. So the City of Erie does have some say and some involvement in this type of, in these types of issues. So I focused the presentation so far today on housing issues that we see and the numbers and the percentages that we have. So if anybody has any questions, I guess.
Thank you so much for coming in, and I've appreciated our conversations. Can you speak a little bit more? I thought it was really illuminating. You know, we obviously have a housing crisis in Erie, but we also have a major issue with blight. And so talking about the habitability, what options are available to tenants if there are some sort of, there's some sort of dispute or whatnot? I know I've heard of cases of landlords keeping the water bill in their name, not paying the water bill to try to force tenants out and making them homeless in some cases. And so can you speak to a little bit, like what options are there, whether it comes to habitability or other issues with neglectful landlords? What options do tenants have in the City of Erie?
Well, the City of Erie, they do have the option of contacting the code enforcement office for an inspection. And, you know, the code enforcement office will inspect and they will deal with the issues as they find them according to their protocols. Under Pennsylvania state law, a tenant has certain limited rights that have been granted by court decisions to withhold rent or what we call repair and deduct, make repairs and deduct from future rent, or terminate or cancel the lease and move. Those types of remedies are of limited value as a practical matter for tenants for a variety of reasons. So there aren't a lot of really good legal options in a lot of cases for tenants that are facing habitability issues, to be honest with you. We do the best we can in terms of advising people in such a way that they can make decisions that help maintain their housing and, you know, not become homeless and things of that nature. But there aren't right now a lot of good options. I will say that the ordinance that was passed, what, about 10 years ago by the city, the residential rental license ordinance, I believe anecdotally has been useful because I don't see some of the kinds of habitability issues. I've been at legal services since 1980s, 1985. So I don't, we don't see some of the serious types of habitability issues that often, like electrical issues and plumbing issues and other things, structural issues that we used to get calls about. And I've attributed that to some extent to this ordinance. So I think it has actually been useful, plus what other measures the city's been taking to deal with blight. But there still are significant problems, as you can see. We do get a significant number of calls from Erie City residents that relate to habitability issues, so.
You said that sometimes you're limited by funds. In the past years, have you had to turn away people because you didn't have the funds to help them?
Correct. We turn a lot of people away. Or we're limited in the amount of time we can spend on a case. So for example, in the area of landlord-tenant, what we call private landlord-tenant cases, those are people who are not in public housing, say by the housing authority or a Section 8 voucher to help subsidize their rent. We limit our assistance basically to a brief, a brief rephone consultation and follow-up information that we send to them to confirm the legal assistance provided. So that just gives an example, because in the housing area, we have so many, as you can see, we have so much demand for it, we don't have enough resources to be going into court on every case and stuff. We do the best we can to help people, give people good, valid information for them to make decisions based on their situations that they face and how the legal system actually works in those, in that area in Pennsylvania and the City of Erie, so.
Thank you.
For folks that are turned away for services, for lack of capacity, is there any insight that you have on what some of their outcomes are? Is that, is that something that you then, you know, you see them again requesting services or just any way that you have any, any idea of where are these folks going if they can't go to Northwestern Legal Services?
To be honest, I, we don't really have good statistics or information about that. So I can't really speak to that particular question. I did include the information about how people can reach us, which are those magnets. So please feel free to, if you have constituents who you're talking to, who may have a legal issue that they are complaining about or tell you about, that we might handle based on the information that I gave to you and you believe they are of limited means, please, please feel free to refer them to us based on the information that I gave there. We have an 800 number and we also, people can also apply online through our Northwest Legal Services website. They can start their application for services there. Again, we're based, we're based on income, so we have specific income guidelines that we have to screen for and the type of case that they have also, and obviously other factors such as conflict of interest, like any law firm would have to deal with, so. But please feel free to refer people to us who you might, you believe might have an issue we could assist them with.
Well, thank you, John. I appreciate the information.
All right, thank you.
Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Moving on to public comments. We have a Mr. Gorski that signed up ahead of time. Do we have anyone else here for public comments? Come on up to the front, the podium. All right, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Paul Winfield Moore, M-O-O-R-E, and please use the entire name. It turns out that there's a Paul W. Moore out there who is, not me, put it that way. My address is 1695 Treetop Drive, Apartment 13B, Erie, PA 16509.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't get the street. Treetop?
1695 Treetop Drive.
Thank you.
Try not to yell.
You're free to speak, you have five minutes.
Thank you. I had a confrontation with your housing inspector who, back in 2021, came out at about midnight on June 2nd and about 2:00 AM, I should say, after a pickup truck hit my house at about 11:30 at night at about 50 miles an hour. The guy, the housing inspector, came out, walked through with me. I have heard nothing from him since, but there's been natural gas leaking out of the pipe. The circuit breaker box was knocked off the wall, and I had PTSD for about a week when I realized how close I came, and sure enough, I smelled it, but I couldn't get enough concentration of where it was coming from. Had all my gas appliances removed, it was still there, was still getting a bill, and I had the gas company come out and discover that there was about 45% of what could be in the soil, actually in the soil, that if the electric had created a spark of some sort, it would have blown up. I am 77 years old, not 20. I do not wish to be treated that way. What has happened because of various things is I have no place to go with my life. This house was my, the mortgage was 100% guaranteed by my, by my military service, and I am trying to figure out what I'm supposed to do when I can't get anybody to tell me things. I had a $13 drainage tax that was imposed on me after I bought the house, and because it was, the mortgage was held until this, by the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, don't get started on that one. They made sure that I didn't know anything about what was going on, and I had no clue about whatever this tax was supposed to cover. However, my property, the retaining wall at the bottom of my property, which is at the, across the street from the stop sign at the T intersection of East 28th Street and Burton, bottom of the hill. And if you walk around there, you can see not only is the house spinning off the foundation, there is water that is obviously causing the retaining wall at the bottom of my property to be moving downhill. And basically, there is water that is, for some reason, the city did not control. And I don't know, don't know why I was allowed to buy the house this way. The roof on the east side of my garage, the roof on the west side of my neighbors to my east, they drained down onto the same area, but the space between them is so narrow that according to all the information I've been given so far, I couldn't put a governor in, and they had not put a governor in either, but the previous owners, the wife, who is now the wife of Mr. Isbicky, Dr. Isbicky Jr., she was, she is now an RN, but she owned the property according to what information I was told. And all three of them, I bought the house from Mr. Isbicky Sr. They apparently did get an Erie Redevelopment Authority grant as I did, and by the way, the grant is not a grant. It's a bought and paid for statistic. I don't move out for five years, you can get more grants from government. That's why I had it only on my bank account. If I'm going to be paying taxes, and I have not been late on any of my taxes to the best of my knowledge, it was all the mortgage holder, I think that I should be kept informed. But it turns out when I ask questions about the people, about the code enforcement, they won't answer me. And I was told I couldn't come in here unless, I wrote it down, and I said, well, why don't you write it to me? And they said, oh, no, we're not going to do that. Well, I went up to the county courthouse and spoke to the assistant DA up there, and he is related to one of your employees, the guy that does the coordination, I forget his name, Sella, I think his last name is?
Your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
As you may get, there's a lot to go on out here that needs to be taken care of if you want to have people staying in Erie. And I would rather do it at this level than in a court, but after the way it was treated by the people that you employ, we may all be going to court.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the time. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President?
Ms. Faulkner? Thank you.
I would like to ask the mayor if he would make sure that our code enforcement officers or department look into his situation and give him update on what we can and what we cannot do.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Do I can show the paperwork out here?
That would help, sure.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be helpful. Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council File Number 16353, Official Ordinance 28/2023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $142,234 from Appropriated and Anticipated Revenue from LSA, The Dive Team Vehicle Project. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16353, and now known as Official File Ordinance 28/2023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 28/2023, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16354, Official Ordinance 29/2023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $177,484 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure thereof. This is for the 2023 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16354, and now known as Official File Ordinance 29/2023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 29/2023 by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16355, Official Ordinance 30/2023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $147,300 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure thereof. This is the 2023 Auto Theft Prevention Authority. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16355, and now known as Official File Ordinance 30/2023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 30/2023, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16356, Official Ordinance 31/2023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $273,428 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following emergency solutions grant, ESG 23 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Ms. Faulkner, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16356, and now known as Official File Ordinance 31/2023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 31/2023, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16357, Official Ordinance 32/2023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $3,40,237 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and $5,000 program income for a total of $3,45,237 for the following community development block grant, CD 23 projects. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Ms. Faulkner, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16357, and now known as Official File Ordinance 32/2023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 32/2023 by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Ordinance 16358, Official Ordinance 31/2023, Appropriating the Sum of $933,497 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for the following home M23 project. Sponsored by Mr. Keyes, seconded by Ms. Faulkner, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16358, and now known as Official File Ordinance 32/2023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 33/2023, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16359, Official Ordinance 34/2023, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $2,800,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the expenditure thereof from the Public Safety Complex Fund, and will be used to purchase the Miller Brothers property located at 2111 State Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. Funds are from the American Rescue Plan Fund Revenue Replacement. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16359, and now known as Official File Ordinance 34/2023, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 34/2023, finally by yea seven, nay zero. Okay, ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16360, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $1,603,568 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure thereof. This is the PCCD LE Support, the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime Delinquency. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keyes, the Council File Ordinance 16360, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16360 by yea seven, nay zero on Council File Number 16361, An Ordinance Closing and Vacating a Portion of an Alley Located Adjacent to the Downtown YMCA Accessible from Both West 10th Street and West 11th Street. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keyes, the Council File Ordinance Number 16361, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16361 by yea seven, nay zero on Council File Number 16362, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $50,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure thereof. This is from the Police Drug and Vice Program. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keyes, the Council File Ordinance Number 16362, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 163- City council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three sixty-two by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number sixteen three sixty-three, an ordinance amending official ordinance number eighty-two oh oh five, known as the zoning ordinance of the city of Erie by changing classification of the parcel eighteen fifty-one seventy-three one oh seven from C three reserved for downtown central business district only to C two to correct a previous zoning map error. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance sixteen three sixty-three, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three sixty-three by yea seven nay zero on first reading. And finally, council file number sixteen three sixty-four, an ordinance amending official ordinance number eighty-two thousand and five, known as the zoning ordinance of the city of Erie by changing the classification of the property located south of East Thirty-third Street between McClelland Avenue and Bird Drive, parcel numbers eighteen fifty-one seventy-three one oh three, eighteen fifty-one seventy-four one oh one, eighteen fifty-one seventy-four one oh two, from C two, which is general commercial, to R one, low-density residential. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance number sixteen three sixty-four, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three sixty-four by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Mr. President, this takes us to new business.
Mr. President, I'll move the balance. Any separations?
A request to separate number seven to abstain from that vote. As an employee of the MLK Center.
Does it need to be separated or just?
I would.
Okay.
The president allows for that to have the extension.
Okay. Any other separations?
I'll separate number one. Call for the vote.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Nelson. We have resolution number one, sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Ms. Flores. Resolved by the council of the city of Erie, a resolution sponsored by, oh, this is already said, Mr. President Nelson appointing Rock Copeland of thirteen thirty-six Patterson Avenue, Erie, PA one six five oh eight, to the city of Erie Sewer Authority to replace Dr. Sherri Mason. Mr. Copeland's term will expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. Discussion?
Just wanted to congratulate Rock on the appointment, once we vote on it, and then I wanted to draw out the potential that we vote against it. Instead, just quickly passing it with the rest since he's here, give him a little bit of angst of that. Dr. Mason was my first ever appointment, so I was pretty excited to have someone with a PhD in freshwater and chemistry and pollution appointed that board. But I'm excited with the background that Rock brings with his expertise of, that drives a lot of contracts and electrical contracts, and he has a lot of background with that, and showed a lot of aptitude and interest in city matters. So, excited to make that appointment. That's all.
Call for the vote.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea seven nay zero. We have resolution number seven, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that the mayor and other appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute the agreements necessary to carry out the following community development block grant, FY twenty-three Community policing, police athletic lead, youth program eighteen thousand, Booker T. Washington Center seventy-two thousand three forty-five, Booker T. Washington Center Summer Rec eighteen thousand five hundred and fifteen, MLK Center HR fifty thousand dollars, MLK Center Summer Rec thirteen thousand seven hundred, JFK Center HR fifty-six thousand seven seventy-two, J.CAC In-Home Services eight thousand two hundred and fifty, Boys and Girls Club HR sixty-six thousand two oh nine, Trinity Center HR thirty-five thousand, Trinity Center Summer Rec twenty thousand, Christian Ministries, Inc., Small Business Assist sixty thousand, UECDC HR sixty-five thousand, City Mission HR sixty thousand, St. Martin Center HR sixty thousand, YMCA Downtown Teen Center HR fifty-five thousand, YMCA Reentry Services forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, and Gannon University Small Business Assistance fifty-three thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars. Discussion?
Mr. President, just clarification. Does the HR stand for Human Relations, or is it Personnel Department?
It's HR, Human Resources.
That's to purchase, to hire an individual? Okay.
Yeah, and I think most of it goes to existing staff.
No, I'm good. I just didn't know what it was. I'm good with it.
Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner.
Abstain.
Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Resolution passes, yea six, one abstentia, nay zero. Mr. President, this takes us to committee reports.
Do we have any volunteers to go first, or do we want to just start one side? All right. Ed, go from right to left.
No problem. I attended the Port Authority study session, and they have been in the process of hiring an assistant director. They had fifty-four folks apply for that job, and they've got it whittled down as of the last study session to two who are not identified until the end of June. We'll find out at the, I think it's the twenty-seventh of the June meeting. They've done a very, very serious search, because the Port Authority has a lot going on, and I'm proud of what they're trying to do. Other than that, I don't have anything more. Happy vacation to Mr. Trup.
Ms. Flores?
I have meetings coming up. The next EMTA public meeting is going to be held through Zoom on June twenty-sixth at four PM. There's also going to be a new American Council meeting at three PM on June twenty-eighth, and that is through Zoom as well. The EMTA did have their mural display, and then the community celebration, it's year two for them. That was successful last Wednesday. There was a large turnout for the concert. We also have a bunch of summer events coming up. We have Eight Great Tuesdays that'll be kicking off on the eleventh of July, and then we have Celebrate Erie dates that have been posted in Rib Fest as well. We have a committee meeting scheduled for July sixth at five-thirty to go over the fiber coverage throughout the city and county, and things that we are doing to help find funding and network of current people who would like to see Erie more accessible with the internet. We also have a committee meeting coming up on July nineteenth at one PM for rental information and any updates that would have occurred since the last study session that we had last year, when we were given the updates on the quality of the housing and the conditions in which our current residents are living in. And if you have any concerns or anything that you would like the city to be aware of, we do have a Erie Citizens Response Center, and their phone number is eight-one-four-eight-seven-zero-one-one-one-one. You can let them know anything such as potholes in your neighborhood, or lighted property that, you know, is concerned. If you see homeless people living in there, you might want to notify some people, just because, you know, burning is a fear, and we have high dry season right now where our firefighters are putting out lots of nuisance fires, and it is a risk since our houses are so close together. So, thank you.
Mr. Keys?
Yeah, today I had the pleasure of attending a seminar that was being sponsored by the Regional Chamber and other organizations, where the Deputy Secretary of Labor for the state of Pennsylvania was here, and he was, the major thrust of it was how to get a more inclusive and more participation by small businesses and minority businesses in contracts with the state of Pennsylvania. And it equates, you know, the inequity and even the severity of how inequitable some of these, some of these items are. And I just wanted to piggyback that, you know, the city of Erie has had certain of the same challenges, and it's, I was happy to see that the new governor and the administration are taking a proactive role to make sure that, that the contracts are going to be more inclusive, and that we're going to spread our money around more equitably. And I think that the city of Erie can take a page out of that book. We have statutes on the books that we do not enforce, and I think that it's important that everyone gets a piece of the pie. We're all taxpayers. It's all of our money, and some of it ought to be coming back to all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to inform the citizens of Erie, especially the parents of youth. The Summer Basketball League, first game will kick off July fifth. This Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, there will be team scrimmages at Spoon's Court on East Nineteenth between French and Holland. The league at Spoon's Court, we have registered one hundred and eighty-one youth from the age of nine to sixteen. I have broken them down into ten per team, per age group. The Bayview Park Division, we have a very low turnout. We usually get around sixty to seventy young men and women, and right now, we have twenty-one to sign up. It's very difficult at this point for me to transfer them if they wanted to play on Nineteenth Street, because I don't like to go more than ten on a team. You exceed that, then the kids aren't getting very much playing time. And my rule is, every kid must play. So, we're going to extend the registration for Bayview Park for another two or three weeks, and we'll start, hopefully, the second week of July in that area. And if we stay at this low number, I'll make something happen if it's just three-on-three, and we'll just play each other for a while. Parents, please do not call me and tell me you forgot to register your kids. I've gotten calls. It is too late to register to play on East Nineteenth Street, but we still have room to play in the Bayview Park, and those games will take place on Tuesdays and Thursdays beginning at five-thirty. So, if you're interested, please contact me, and we'll make sure your kid plays. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Trup?
Mr. President, I want to start off by thanking Mr. Brzezinski for your gratulations. I did surpass my twenty-fifth year in education, so I want to start off by just commending our educators around the school, around the city, public, private, doesn't matter. It's a big job. Hopefully, they'll enjoy their summers and thank them for their hard work that they do with our youth. Also want to commend Ms. Angela McNair and Erie's Black Wall Street for the Juneteenth celebration they put on in Perry Square on Saturday. I remember when it first started, it was just in the parking lot at the Booker T. Washington Center, and now they've really grown. Thank the city for the support of that, also the mayor for the support. I did talk to the downtown partnership also. They want to thank city council and the mayor's office for their support of all the events, and they want people to know that the schedule of events is out. You can get at the front desk in City Hall, and also they have a website, they have a Facebook page, they have a full calendar of summer events out there, so take advantage of some of those events. They just want everybody to know, thank you for your support. Thanks.
Ms. Faulkner?
All right. I attended the Water Authority Board Meeting on the fifteenth. While Pennsylvania is now under a drought watch, the Water Authority wanted, and the board wanted to assure that we, we have water, water is plentiful here in Erie. So, even with that drought watch, please keep sprinkling your yards, watering your gardens, all that. We've got, we've got plenty of water. So, that was from Water Authority. Attended the Sewer Authority meeting yesterday. All of their massive rehabilitation projects are going really well, which is always great to see. From a public safety standpoint, there had been a lot of news coverage about the increased violence down at the dock and at Dobbin's Landing, and as I had said in a news interview, I would go down over the weekend and check it out. So, I went down on both a Friday and Saturday night, after nine PM, after ten PM, and it was really tame. So, any increased security or police presence, or whatever it was that's going on there, I appreciate to see that, because we want to keep those public spaces safe and accessible for everyone. So, hopefully, that doesn't, doesn't peak in violence again. Police Department had one thousand two hundred and fifty-six calls for service last week. In a first since I have been in this role, there were no people shot last week. And there will be a swearing-in of five new officers next week as well. Fire, really appreciate the fire department's swift action with the burn ban. That has been lifted, but please continue to use caution if you're having a fire in your backyard, follow city rules, and just use common sense. EMS, Emergicare is our EMS provider in the city, had one thousand seven hundred and forty-six calls for service through the month of May, and also provided one hundred and eighty mutual aid calls. So, I've been working really closely with Emergicare and being a part of countywide conversations about the national and statewide and local EMS crisis, and how we can address that. Just a reminder, check out Emergicare if EMT is ever a career. You or kiddos in your life would be, young people in your life would be interested in. They do pay for your training, and then you get to become an EMT and have a lot of career opportunities after that. So, that is great. Lastly, yet again, it is June. Happy Pride Month. There was a lot going on on social media over the last two days about an incident at the library. There was a removal of a pride display after complaints. And while I have voiced my concerns around that, I just want to say to every queer kid growing up in Erie that you are loved, you belong here, you are safe, and please come out to the pride parade this Saturday. It kicks, lineup starts at eleven AM at Eleventh and State. The parade steps off at noon, and the celebration at Perry Square goes until five o'clock. So, please show, especially the young LGBTQ-plus kids in your life and in our city, extra love and support, especially after an incident where- love and support, especially after an incident where essentially their, their, their voices were, were censored. So that is my committee report.
Thank you, Ms. Faulkner.
Things that I've done the last couple of weeks, I just want to, this was just stretching me into the last meeting as well, but I want to continue to remind people about the Historic Preservation Committee. There are fifteen thousand dollar grants that are a ten-to-one match, or you put in ten percent, and the city provides up to fifteen thousand for home repairs for some of our aging houses. That's available on the city's website and on the Redevelopment Authority's website. The mayor and I were skateboarding today. That was fun. I was the only one foolish enough to get on a skateboard and get injured. He's still healthy. We had an EMS meeting. Ms. Faulkner was there with us as well. Something to note is that EMS services are municipal responsibility by state law, and our municipality is doing well. We provide more mutual aid to the surrounding municipalities than we receive, and while it could always be better when she speaks of the crisis, the city is doing as, as well as any municipality in the area for that. I actually, I've got a mother-in-law and her husband that are in their seventies living in Harbor Creek, and I, I actually, looking at some of the stats, I was suggesting them, and they, they should probably be concerned for an ALS, an advanced life savings need for ambulance services. So we did meet with the county because there is a broader concern, and, and I'm, I'm excited that the city is a point of strength as far as those stats across the region, and, and I hope that our residents continue to enjoy those services well without being overburdened with any additional issues that the county may be grabbing for themselves. Like to thank so many of the members of council that have subcommittee meetings coming up in the next month. We've got three of them. That is a, an aggressive slate of work being done. I also had a bunch of Juneteenth events. Went out, saw, saw Councilman Troop play in Perry Square for a minute, went out to a street unveiling for Bishop Asa Jones, went back, saw Councilman Troop playing some more, four hours until his fingers went numb on that bass. So some really excellent events happening. I mean, that's some, that's kind of thing that five years ago, I feel like nobody was really noting as such a celebration. We were really, we were one of the only governments that were still open on Juneteenth, as the federal governments had closed, as the mail had shut down. I think that's worth considering for next year, is making a move as a city to, to give our, our workers the day off to commemorate that holiday. As the federal government makes that move, a community such as ours, I would expect to be even ahead of them on that. And it's something I didn't think of until walking into the office on Monday. And then one last thing, as all of those subcommittee meetings are coming up, we have a really big one for those of you there tuned in. Tomorrow, we're having a, a study session on CRIS. It's going to be vital to have a very high-quality board on that, so this is going to be something that I think, that as we discuss it and as we look at what the representation is of that board, that this is one of the biggest economic mechanisms that the city has an opportunity to see. It's important, as some of the numbers have been kicked around publicly, to consider how a concentration of those appointments influenced the, the future of the board. I'm, I got, I, I plan on being around when CRIS is over, you know, in a rocking chair by then, retired and such. Maybe people have their doubts about me doing that, but, well, no comment on that, no. But, you know, something to consider, that if we give those seats to be considered in the broader region, and then those offices change, you know, this, for example, having the majority of seats go to a state senator, where as he's put his name in the hat for governor before and run for that, and, you know, who's next up after him? Is this something where, you know, maybe our Republican state reps make a swing at that? Do we have an economic driver in our city where Jake Banta has five of the seats? There's some concerns to make sure that we have a broad representation of appointing on that, so that we have the most high-quality board for the next thirty years and not just in the board that it begins with. So I'm looking forward to those discussions tomorrow to make sure that, you know, I expect that maybe by the end of those discussions, the council will have a choice, and I honestly, I think that our fifth choice, or our first choice may be better than our current senator's fifth choice. So I, I feel confident that we will have the strongest board possible with the most voices at the table. Whether I even give myself on one of those is, is probably unlikely, but I want to make sure that we have a strong board for that, and I'm really enthusiastic about this meeting tomorrow. Spending forty-five minutes spoke, speaking to the, the head of the Bethlehem CRIS this morning, really trying to make sure that we have the voices of all the different CRIS authorities that exist in our state, as we meet with the former head of the Lancaster CRIS tomorrow. So that's it for my report. Onto the solicitor?
I have nothing.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll be brief also. I do enjoy the skateboarding experience. I enjoyed watching everything, and that's all I did was watch. I was pretty amazed what some of those kids did, but also I wanted to let, you know, I met with Eric Barry Darzen in Benton, C Bainbridge today. Benton is actually born and raised here in Erie. Moved out for quite a while because he couldn't do things he wanted to do on the artistic level here, but now he's starting to do it. They spent about two and a quarter million dollars buying properties at Fourteenth and State, and I'm amazed at what they've already done with those properties. I've been at a couple of events there, and it's, it's really, really encouraging, and they're, they're going to do, I think, great things for the city. They're transforming that part already, and they're looking for ways they can do more in different ways. It's really, really encouraging. You're probably all aware of the improvement to the Children's Museum at Fourth and French there. I, I went on, yesterday evening to a presentation, basically honoring people that had given the, I think it was about nineteen million dollars they needed, which was double what they originally thought they would need when they first started planning this in twenty fifteen. But it was, it was very impressive, and I was back this morning at ten for the, the grand opening, and I had to go back in and look at it again. It's three floors, and it's incredible, it's incredible stuff, really, really neat. We're lucky to have that here in Erie. And the last thing I just want to mention is this Saturday is the Pride Parade at noon on Sa- Saturday, the twenty-fourth, and then there'll be a pride event in Perry Square that, you know, the parade will end there, and that, that event will be going on, and I'll be speaking briefly at that as well, so be a, be a good event this weekend, and hopefully a lot of people will be there and supportive of it. Thank you.
All right. With that, meeting is adjourned.
City Council adjourns at eight-thirty P.M. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson.